All right, good afternoon. It is May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The time is four P M. This is a special meeting of the Argyle I S D Board of Trustees. At this time, we will determine if a quorum is present.
Leona McDade, present.
Josh Westrum, present.
Rich McDowell, present.
Lee and Arco, present.
Matt Sladen, present.
Kirk Hawksworth, present.
I S M Sladen, present. If you'll please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
One time, eleven years.
Mr. Hawksworth, if you'll lead us in our opening prayer, please.
To your Lord, thank you for this time today. Thank you for us being able to come together for the benefit of the students of this district. After the ones who graduated last night and the new ones that are coming our way. Appreciate everybody's time and interest in the students of this district, and please watch over us and guide us in your name. Amen.
Amen. We did not have anyone sign up for public forum comment, so at this time, we will move towards the workshop portion of our meeting.
Are going to, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Mr. Holland, they're gonna run our construction workshop, but we do have about an hour. So I will let them talk about our agenda.
Thank you. So we do have a few things on the agenda tonight, and with the hour timeframe, we felt like the majority of discussion may go along around elementary school five. So we have that at the end of the agenda. So just as reminders, we go through the first few things, maybe fifteen, twenty minutes before we get to elementary five. So if we get bogged down on something, we can always come back and address it if we have time at the end. But we do wanna give, uh, figure time to elementary five discussion.
Let you take it from there, Jeff.
Uh, so these are the, the topics we'll be talking about here in this order, elementary five being last, so try to, to get through these, uh, in about fifteen, twenty minutes, uh, and get to elementary five where we think most of the time is gonna be spent. So the first topic, uh, I wanted to talk to you about just the high school site in general from an irrigation perspective. Uh, we've had problems with our well, as I think most of you know, for a while now. We've spent money repairing it a couple of times. Uh, it is currently non-functional right now. Uh, with the succession of projects we've had, we've had some different contractors, we've had different designers come in. So I think over the course of, of the last five years with these multiple projects, uh, we've gotten some gaps in this system as a whole, uh, our well being a critical piece of that. Essentially, the well was the water source for the front half of the campus. Uh, the south half of the campus was on city water. But now that we've come in with the stadium and the indoor activity center, we've, we've affected all of those water sources except for one. So we've moved seven of those water meters that we had providing water for the south half. We have a well not functional for the north half. So we've got some temporary connections that have been made so we can get water throughout the system. But that also requires us to do some things that we typically wouldn't do, such as opening master valves. So we've always got water mains under pressure, so we get leaks that we don't discover soon, then we lose a lot of water, so. Those are some of the issues that, that we're facing with, with this succession of projects and, and different people on each one. So kind of looking ahead, uh, it's my recommendation, our recommendation, that we engage a professional designer, uh, that can bring that knowledge, design something for the whole site, looking at the pieces that we've done in the past. Someone that can bring in the experience and, and the expertise on a well. Whether we fix the well we have, do we need to look at a new well because there are some concerns about the water table? Out here in the current depth of our pump, it's as low as it can go, which is less than a thousand feet. Uh, so we're suggesting that we bring in that person and they can kind of do a study, do some designs, do some budgeting, and help guide us through a solution that we can implement that would get this campus back where it needs to be with all the right monitors and checks, uh, to avoid some of these costly leaks that we have had in the past. So just very briefly, I wanted to bring that to you, and that's, that's what we would propose moving forward. Uh, our south half, everything new that's been touched will be fixed when they're done, but we still have this north half to, to kind of untangle, if you will, and get back on track.
So how much would you say that we have spent on this well situation? I know we've, at least since I've been on the board, we've dealt with that poor well at least twice majorly.
I've brought it to you twice, I believe, since I've been here. Uh, I didn't look up those totals, but it's probably a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I think.
Plus, plus the initial spend.
Yes.
Because the site, this, I mean, the high school site is not, I mean, what, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one?
Uh, well, the, the middle school phase one was twenty fifteen, that's when the well went in, and then the first major addition was phase two in twenty twenty-one. Uh, and at that point in time, that's when the well repairs started. I don't know if they hit the line when their drilling appears, or they found that it was in conflict and moved it, but that happened like right before I came on board of the district. So at the time phase two kicked off, that's, that's when these things, these events started happening.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna say my piece, and then you done, I promise you. That one, if, from my perspective, one of the ch- challenges I have with these type of situations is I wanna hold somebody accountable for the, the system not performing. And what you're telling me is, is it's really not because of the different contractors and subs that have been used on the different phases for the site, that everybody has a little hand in it.
That, that is correct. There's not an at-fault scenario here.
The benefit is sometimes why you, you like archi- uh, contractors and architects from site to site, 'cause now we have accountability.
Yes, consistency.
So I like, you know, maybe that's something I think along down the road, but overall, the site looks bad. I mean, I was, actually spent a lot of time on some graduation ceremonies, and it was really focused on, oh, this is really bad, and it needs to be fixed. And so I'm for exploring how to do that.
So, um, when you guys, I know you guys use, whether it's A V or, you know, you guys have consultants, I think y'all call them, that y'all bring to the table. Do y'all do that in landscape?
Yes, we do.
Um, does that include irrigation?
Typically, irrigation, um, they can do that. Uh, they also, a lot of times, go to the actual manufacturer, the subcontractors that actually perform the work, that kind of are the specialists.
That all, but all that, all that rolls up under you guys?
It, it can, yes.
I know we've used different contractors, but the one consistent over there is you guys.
Um, it was for two of the projects. Landscape has changed with the new field, correct?
Right, but the new field has brought a, a challenge, right? But we have, we've had other repairs prior to that.
Yes, we've had other repairs prior to that, which show, which was not an at-fault of, of the designer we had, which was consistent between phase one and phase two.
We still had problems between phase one and phase two.
That, that's when our well equipment was failing, you know, for different reasons that I can't, you know, give you with certainty what they were, but we know that, that pump motors have gone out a few times, wires have burned up.
I guess, I guess my struggle is somewhat like Mr. Westrum is, you know, if you were, if we were spending our own personal money, which for a lot of us this is, we would wanna hold somebody accountable. And if we know that a project is gonna have multiple phases, how are we not planning for these multiple phases to say, hey, when we, if we put this here, right, just know it's gonna have to be dug up and moved. So we have to think, I feel like we, we're not thinking ahead, and it's costing us money. And now, I, I don't know what the number is, you're gonna tell me it's gonna be to fix it, but I'm sure it's gonna be significant. My question is then, is that, how long is that good for? And this isn't really, I'm not throwing that at you, Jeff, you happen to be the messenger, but I mean, how long is it good for? We go spend a million dollars, or whatever the number is. Is it good for a year? Is it good for two years? What's, how long is it good for? Somebody's gotta be, there does have to be somebody held accountable or warranty the work or something. Cause we, I mean, this project to, to this Dr. McDade point is, we've had this, well, we've had well issues since a year after we installed. Even so much that we had to go to city water, right? So I don't know what the answer is, but I don't know, I, from this point forward, somebody, whoever we do the job with, needs to understand we are going to hold them accountable, that it works the way it was designed to work for a period of time, and it's not a year.
Yes. Yes, and that, and that's why I'm making this recommendation, and I've talked with a, a few firms, and, and I feel there's some firms out there that can definitely take that responsibility on and provide that.
So the, so the consultant that you guys used, maybe it was different from phase to phase, they don't, they don't share any of that responsibility?
Well, the phase one was where the well was in, installed and utilized. When we got to phase two, we were directed not to do another well, so that's when the decision was made to go to uh, city water at that time.
I know, but I'm talking about the, the not working of the first one.
Yeah, and I don't know that we, I, I guess timeline, we were brought up that it wasn't working until after phase two was in construction, which was how many years? Six, seven years after the first one. So I, I think we definitely, we're not made aware of that up until then. That's when we found out, was once phase two was completing, I think, is when the first one was.
And I kind of recall after the last time we did a repair of sorts, the, the warranty period wasn't very long. Or at least as long as I thought it should be.
It was on the pump. It was one year.
Yeah, one year.
It was a year warranty.
And then there were all issues.
Right, but we're talking about a couple of different things. We're talking about the well, the pump, we're talking about all the irrigation, all the zones, all the, everything, and so you, I mean, you can, you know, split those up any way you want, but, I mean, ultimately, the problem is, and kind of leaning on what Mr. Hawksworth and Westrum said, when we get this fixed, if anybody comes out to do any more construction in the future, then when they dig a hole, they should know that they're about to bust into a particular zone, and what needs to be done to make sure that there are no leaks, and once whatever they're doing is complete, that there are no issues with the irrigation system.
So, yeah, so let me, let me ask you to follow up. The elementary five and middle school two, right? Do you guys usually consult for that, and was irrigation part of that plan?
Yes.
Okay, so if they dig something up as a result of having to build a second school, that's on you guys?
It'd be part of the coordination, us and the contractor, yes.
But if it's not coordinated like it wasn't here, it gets destroyed, that's on them?
It'd be between us and the contractor, depending on what it was, yeah.
What, what was the, do you remember, well, it's probably a crazy question about the city water and the bill and that, cause we didn't do it for a long time. But we did it for a while.
Didn't do city water? Uh, we don't have any good, uh, consistency in watering to give me that historical data on what it would cost. We've tried to run some numbers, uh, but I don't have the site as a whole. I only kind of have the south half, um, but it was, uh, several hundred thousand dollars a year if you were to water as a landscape architect, we recommend, which is gonna be a lot more water than, than we typically would do. We could get by with less and still have it look acceptable. And it's still several hundred thousand dollars, even at that level.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Um, would you guys be open to splitting it with us to fix it? All the design and money you've made off this district for the last few years?
We definitely have to look at the situation. Um, I know for the fact, for the phase two that we, I don't remember if the design was touching the well. We were just maintaining what was in the phase one. So anything that happened, um, I have to go back and look at the records. I understand it was from something that we worked, it wasn't changed.
Look at it and see if there was one to help support us.
Yeah, it wasn't changed.
In their phase two, it did, you know, it was the same designer, so he did have a whole site design, uh, but it's all centered around that well, which was not functional. And so that's where the issue comes in, is what we've had to do to get water there. That's the issue. It was designed for that source, and we, we don't have it.
So was the well not big enough in the first place?
Uh, the well.
I mean, excuse me, the pump, or the low pump?
The pump was big enough. The well, uh, was not drilled eight inch diameter to the bottom, so we can't set the pump any lower, so as our water table drops, when you kick on that ponsil, it draws that water table down, and we're getting very close now to where we're gonna be pulling that down to a dry condition that will ruin the pump.
So was it supposed to be drilled eight inches to the bottom, or are you not allowed to do that?
No, you can. Uh, that's just, was not the design approved back then in twenty fifteen, sixteen.
But who's approving the design?
It, it would have been through the district. I mean, I wasn't here at the time, so I can't speak to who actually is.
Look, I'm not sitting here reviewing well depths and design. Okay, and so are they, is the expectation that we hire these people to design a landscape plan? And that we expect them, we're not budget cutting, we're not value engineering it, they bring us a plan that they think's gonna work, and we approved it. And if it doesn't work, then somebody needs to own it, not the district. And that's what I think, I mean, is it, is there ownership of this? Or is there just saying, you know what, that's just the way it sometimes goes? Cause we didn't, I understand the district didn't say, hey, let's penny pinch here, let's value engineer. We did what the consultants told us to do.
Yeah.
And now you're back a few years later saying, it's not a good design. And then you say the district approved it. I don't think that's true. We just approved what the consultants told us is gonna work.
Which came through the architect.
Yes, and, and again, I believe the design was always for it at the initial design for phase one, where we never heard it did not work to that design. What we understood is when phase two happened, there was something wrong with the well. But we did not understand that it was the design capacity that we designed to it. That we, we never heard otherwise. It was just, it was, the well wasn't working.
But you're not, you're not proud of how it's working. Just, just tell me that. Say, just say, I am not proud of how this landscape plan has played out for the district.
It, it should work, the pump should work for what it was designed for, and it hasn't.
And say it's not the district's fault.
Yeah, I don't think it was the district's fault.
Okay.
I don't know when that happened.
So I'm assuming we're getting short on time if we're gonna get through this, so let's manage.
I'm sorry. All right. Uh, wanna talk to you also about, uh, stating into, into our activity center about our contingencies, where some of that money's been spent, where we're at to date. Uh, so this chart, uh, this hasn't broken out. We've got three categories of contingency we set up at the beginning, and so we've been tracking expenditures against each category. So you can see that detail here, but really the two numbers to look at are those bottom two. That's the three contingencies combined per project, and so there's separate projects, separate props. So we've got remaining balance, uh, as of this snapshot day, the fifty-one thousand for the indoor activity center. That's to finish, to get to the end. And we've got remaining contingencies of thirty-nine thousand on the stadium to get to the end and complete that. So we're running very low on contingencies. Uh, this slide shows you the interest that we've earned. And, uh, if you recall, when we first brought the project in, it was, it was over the construction budget. We had a path to get there using some of the projected interest. So we've actually, uh, achieved that, gotten there, broken that, that threshold, and now we're actually earning interest that can be spent back in this project. Uh, so here you're seeing stadium on the left, uh, we've got six hundred eighty-one thousand. Uh, that's actually through March. Um, and then on the indoor activity center, we've got three hundred ninety thousand. So for, uh, April, we've got about an additional ninety thousand total to add to that, so we're, we're somewhere a million one, uh, something on that total. So here, uh, I've gone back to the contingency expenditures and kind of categorized some of these, uh, just into some larger categories. I mean, there's been quite a number of things that we spent money on, credits we've gotten back, um, throughout the course. So I just took out the ones that, that were showing the highest, uh, costs. So I've got, you know, each one of these has several items in there. So with various tracking and turf and, uh, field event conditions that we found as we've built, we are looking at investing about two hundred fifty thousand of these funds in those. That could be for subgrade prep or, uh, repairing some track edge conditions so that we can finish the new paving into the, the existing track and, and have a good smooth transition. Uh, site irrigation issues that we just kind of touched on with needing to get someone to look at the site as a whole. Uh, so the, so through the course of the project, we've had to deal with a lot of irrigation issues that we wouldn't have known about until we, you know, after we got into this project. Uh, site electrical issues that we've found, where we've had to relocate, uh, some parking lot light circuits. We are having to relocate the circuits that go out to the baseball softball lighting, um, because they were actually in the way and too shallow, as it turns out. Uh, and then broadly categorized just safety, security, communications issues. So this is some of the tech things uh, that we've had to incorporate into the project as we went through. Um, all this to say, uh, we're proposing to add money to the contract to increase these contingencies back up, to make sure we have enough to get to the end of the project. Uh, and by having this in the project, that makes it available to, to go ahead and make those decisions to keep the project moving at a, a quicker pace. And so here we've, uh, talked with contractor, we're proposing to bring to you a request for three hundred thousand to be put back into the stadium project contingencies, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the indoor activity center.
From the interest?
And this is all coming from project interest, which we're at, uh, we're well over a million dollars in interest, and that's usable interest today. Uh, and so this is four hundred fifty thousand of that. And we will continue to earn interest, although it does shrink each month a little bit.
So you're basically saying, if I did the math right, to take the six hundred eighty-one thousand on the stadium interest plus thirty-nine thousand contingency that's left?
No.
We're adding that to the contingency, and a smaller portion, we're adding, what's being allocated now.
And taking out three hundred thousand.
We wanna add three hundred thousand to replenish it. We have six hundred eighty-one thousand available as of the end of March.
Okay.
And so that would still leave you three hundred and ninety-one thousand as interest there.
And that interest in those propositions can, has to stay in those propositions?
It does.
If they're allocated to those propositions. So having this on here, what we're talking about is potential bring-in action item back to you in June that addresses, um, this contract.
Are we giving anything extra for what this additional investment, or are we just giving enough money in the pot to get what we originally planned for?
We'll do it into a plan.
Originally planned, so it's just, it's just simply.
So where did we miss? Can you go back to the previous slide? One more, sorry.
This one?
Yeah, just sorry, reading this correctly, right? So three hundred thousand on the stadium is where we started, right, for contingencies? Is that correct?
For the owner contingency.
Yes.
We had a hundred and twenty-five in what we call a site signage and town comments allowance. And then we had a hundred fifty thousand in what we called technology and power related. So it's the total of those, uh, three that we had for the stadium project.
And.
Five seventy-five, I think it is.
So for, so as an example, the stadium, site signage and town comments, we had a hundred twenty-five, and we spent two hundred.
Yes.
And do we know what's driving that? Do we not? Something we missed in the planning that we didn't expect to cost what it cost, or we just didn't plan for it, or?
Well, no, this, this will be things that we, we know are gonna happen through the plan reviews. They're gonna make comments that will require us to add scope to the project to comply with those comments.
It may not necessarily have been identified at bid day, say.
Correct.
The exact nature of that.
Right, that's, that's the question, is if there was a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars identified as contingency, we've gone well over that, so we clearly missed the mark.
So it's, it's things that you, that were not in the original bid, because we were still going through plan review when the, when the bid happened. And so there's things like additional screening that the ci- the town asked for that were then had to be provided, which was peers and beams and masonry to screen some areas that they required screening that was not in the original scope. That's a, that's as an example. So that was the, the additional, the, that scope in that wasn't included.
So I feel like I've gotta say something here, cause I was on the twenty-two buck. And the reason we did the stadium for the price of the stadium and the indoor facility and all that is because we already had the turf, we already had the lights, we already had all this stuff, and this is gonna be this new grand project we're gonna have with nine thousand seats and all that sort of stuff. And then to come in and, and start, I mean, turf, I mean, the turf had changed.
No, that, I think the turf charge, the turf is the, um, is to repair around the perimeter of the track and some of the things like that, Jeff. Is that, is that accurate?
It is.
And so it's existing turf that's kind of life cycle cost. I mean, it's even deteriorated a little bit from when we started the project to now, and I wouldn't attribute it to construction or anything. I think it's just, you know, just natural kind of the, the earth is moving around that, around the track a little bit. So it's replacing the, and repairing the curb around the perimeter of the turf. So we didn't include any, any, all the existing turf was existing, same thing with the track. Um, the field sports were new as part of the scope, and the lights were new as part of the scope, uh, because the location that they were in didn't work with the parking lots that were added, and I know that was, that predated you on the board, but we talked through.
But we talked about it in the bond, that those lights were gonna be able to be used, that we would be able to use the facility as it, as it stood.
But you were, you said that because that's what we were told.
Right.
But that didn't end up happening.
Oh, we're gonna take a new wooden tunnel?
Well, we are moving it now.
The reusing.
Originally, we would put it in back when we built that field, and it was, they were all in, and the turf was in for when we did the stadium. But that didn't end up happening.
And that, that was a communication error, was it not? Like, not on us. It just wasn't communicated from when we purchased them with bond funds.
I don't know the reason. I just know that's what we were told when we decided to put a construction in. But I heard something a minute ago, too, that the, the softball light switch or baseball softball light switch wasn't buried deep enough?
Uh, they couldn't have buried it as shallow as we found it, so I think what happened is it went in early, and then they came back, probably graded later. So we're positive it's been shallow. Potentially, I mean, potentially, but to go down that road would delay this project to try to enforce anything that, you know, may or may not be enforceable. We'd have to do some consults on that. I mean, that, that's just my guess as to what happened. I, I cannot prove that's what happened. I would, I would add that our original contingencies as a total was two point five percent on a project of this nature. Uh, I wouldn't ever recommend going in less than four.
So did we do that to make it fit in a budget?
And that was one of the reasons we tightened those up, was to help with the budget because we were already over. So it is slimmer than, than what I would have wanted.
So it pacifized us on paper, knowing that it was gonna go over, because it was too slow?
Well, I wouldn't say knowing that it's gonna go over. We've, we've encountered a lot of things on this site that we could not have known about that are well beyond what we could have absorbed in the contingencies.
Can you, can you give me a couple of those?
Well, that's.
So the, the stuff not being buried deep enough?
Well.
It was buried again after they buried it.
It was in the way anyway. Even it had been deep enough, it would still be in the way and would have had it been relocated. So the fact it's not deep enough is not necessarily, so we're completely relevant to that, because we would have. because we would have to move it anyway. But we would not have any way to know that.
So when a project is designed, especially on a site that exists and you're adding stuff to it, do you guys get insights to where things is, to where things are before you start designing?
Typically, we count on the as-built construction drawings that were created by the previous contractor. So as part of what they owe to you when they finish the job, they'll not.
So those were incorrect.
Well, there was some discrepancy. It didn't appear that, that there were lines indicated to be where we found them. And their due diligence as well ahead of time to the best of their ability. It was, I think it was a little surprising that it was so, quite so shallow. It was an unusual condition. There were some things that were hit that were part of, you know, that could have been anticipated and those were not charged through to you guys. That was taken care of by, you know, the group that was responsible for hitting them. They're fixing them, so I'm focused making sure.
I think the only cost that was absorbed by the district is the ones that, for instance, there was a few, a few lines that were not shown on as-built drawings, but that happened to run right through the middle of the ice. So it has to be relocated to stay where it currently is. So those type of things are the ones that there were a cost associated with. We absorbed the, POGA did hit the lights of the tennis court. We paid for that on our own and we absorbed every bit of that, our contractors. But the ones where there was cost associated is the only ones where they were not represented on the drawing. There was no way of knowing that they were there and they had to be relocated in order to complete the current project.
We can bring this back in June to discuss more, but just for time's sake, to be able to get to elementary five, I suggest we might move to the next one. Which is a quick look at the twenty twenty-five bond schedule. So of course, in the bond plan, we had an original plan of what the sales would be. And this is just, we worked through trying to update and make sure that we have everything following in line. So really what we've identified in twenty-five are what we feel like the sale needs to capture there, which is a little over seventy-two million. And in twenty-six, just under forty-six million. And then in twenty-seven, a hundred and twenty-nine million and it goes full from there. So a couple of things that we've identified that we brought into twenty-five are listed out in the first year down at the bottom, capital improvements. For example, at Hilltop, there was some erosion at one of the building that was on the list. We felt like that really needed to be looked at immediately rather than even waiting a year. And so if you're going to go touch the exterior, we felt we need to do everything in the exterior all as one project. So that's why part of that's been brought forward. Sixth grade center, you know, there were just a handful of things on that that we felt like needed to be looked at immediately. The storm line, the storm drain line, the replacement of the bleachers and the HVAC systems that are at end of life. Three seventy-seven, we talked about all the turf replacements, track resurface, and the baseball softball concession and covered scene. The one that we felt like we needed in the book was the theater rigging and lighting. The more we've looked into that, we feel better about moving that up and we're going ahead and working on that rather than pushing that. I think that was later in twenty-nine. And then, of course, Canyon Falls, we had always talked about the academic hallway connector being this first bond sale. The rest of those, I believe, have all been within that first sale that we've talked about. But if you have any questions about that, we do plan on bringing that in June and in July to look at to move forward with the sale this summer. And RBC is working through what that looks like for us and the timeline.
So that seventy-two million is basically an arbitrary recommendation that that's what we can sell or sell out?
We provided this to them and said, you know, does this work? Is this within our capacity? And that's what they're working on now, but they felt like yes. We'd actually given them the numbers because we were still working on some numbers. So we said use seventy-five million as a planning tool. And so that's what they're working on and giving to us. But yes, initially they felt like that would work for us. We've had our first look at our profit guide for next year. Of course, we don't get our, we don't receive our certified until July. But we're still, we're up over twenty percent as an initial word. We know that will drop. We feel like down to thirteen to fifteen percent range is where we'll end up with. But it did give the ability as of the end of April to see what that first look is. But we did want to talk that through with you just a little bit before we bring it to you in June, July to look at.
The only comment I'm going to make is sixth grade center is something that I always would like to push off to the latest in hopes that we can find a different path forward for the district as opposed to continuously investing in that site in a way that I find that to be a pretty expensive site for one grade and, you know, having to staff it with police officers and principals and librarians and nurses and stuff like that. But hopefully there's a path forward for the district where that sixth grade center would no longer be a part of the plan.
We'll go back and take another look at those and see if that can wait till another day.
Well, I think Gary's RBC can wait.
I mean, I think the building would be, yeah.
Right, I think it's probably more like gym and some of those spaces.
So on the three seventy-seven that says baseball softball concessions and then turf replacement, is that turf replaced with baseball softball or baseball softball football?
Everything over there right now. We will have, before we actually move forward, we'll have to analyze them and have someone come in and test them and make sure of the useful life left. But, you know, on paper, they're all maybe at the end of their useful life.
So it's not necessarily done a deal, that's what you're, you would use it for. But somebody's going to come in and say, hey, you can get another twelve months, eighteen months out of this one or that. Now, if they're going to mobilize, I get it, you probably need to, I'm assuming you probably save money doing them all once versus, at least baseball softball together with football by itself maybe versus mobilizing three times. But I struggle with that a little bit, specifically if it's football only because we're about to, you just said we're about to do it over here too, right?
No, replace it right now, no.
We're just trimming up the edges?
Yeah, it's actually not the turf, it's the track edge.
Too, right?
It's the track edge.
It's the track edge of the track.
Not the turf. Not the turf.
When I'm set to open the middle school to a non-volunteer, all the kids.
Okay, just have a quick update on the middle school. The town has come back and asked us to submit for separate permits on this shortlist of items. This is direct from the town. Some of these are pretty much unheard of. Discus and chocolate pads because of the metal posts that hold the net. But we are working on that right now to get these things submitted and see where we go. There will probably be additional fees, is what I'm expecting from the town, but they haven't said so. That's just what they've asked for.
Anything they can do, be a thing they're asking, that's their goal.
So it's not holding up a project, it's just more paperwork that we've got to work with the town.
To what end?
I don't understand to what end. I mean, we submitted everything together and it was specifically addressed in our application that it was for everything, but.
And they pulled them out and they want them done separately?
They've identified them and want them done separately.
And so can we go back to what happened? This is a closed discussion outline.
Elementary number five, just a quick review, contract status. So we've got POGA on board as our CM. That was a package that was awarded with the middle school back in August twenty-three. We've got Corrigan on board as architect. That was awarded back in April twenty-three. Currently in the process of actually doing the third-party storm shelter reviews, gotten on board. And then we'll be going out and requesting budget for our material testing service in the next two to four months. The plan would be to bring that along with the GMP to you the same night for information and action so we can kick the project off.
Can I ask one other question on permits?
Sure.
Before we go too far? You said generally you're feeling that this is unheard of. Is that fairly common to have? I mean, if you submit everything all at one time, it's not common for them to pull things out?
We have not seen this to this degree on other locations, other cities we've worked in. It's very common to issue our full set of plans with all the accessories, especially goalposts and chocolate discus nets. I mean, that's all just part of the contract documents that we have.
Occasionally they'll want a fence permit or something.
Fints and signage. Signage and fits are the two that we typically see. So that's not unheard of, but I've never been asked this before on any other jurisdiction.
Okay, permitting status of elementary five. Site plan was approved at the April town council meeting. We do have our civil engineering development package into the town for review now. And then our building package actually is scheduled, I believe, to be sort of admitted this week, right?
Today?
Yeah.
Tomorrow, Sunday?
So we'll have that in for review and I would anticipate a release for building permit by the end of the summer, probably. We don't think there'll be too many comments, having just gone through this with the middle school. We would expect this.
Are you sure?
We would expect this to be a fairly easy process.
But are you sure?
I'm not sure of that, yeah.
We hope we're easy and expect.
We're dealing with anomaly.
Yes. But we have a plan for something. So we're trying to balance what we expect with a little bit of hesitation. So this is our projected timeline based on that. We should have our final construction documents issued by July third. If it goes well with the town, that could be a lot sooner. Right now, though, we're planning on this with a bid date end of July. And then that would give us time to have GMP brought to you in September for information and October for approval. So we will be starting around the day of the first of this year with a substantial completion currently of early January twenty-seven. And then doing our watch list final completion, furniture deliveries ahead of school by a few months so that we're not all crammed in that one summer trying to wrap it up.
Does it help any if we have a meeting sooner than waiting five weeks between information only and then approval?
Everything would help, yes. If we want to try to accomplish the project sooner, everything we can do will help.
What it also helps with is with a schedule like this, we have to indicate to our bidders and our bid packages that their bids have to be held for up to ninety days. So they're building in additional escalation, knowing that contracts won't be awarded for a certain period of time. If you expedite that and have the proposal one week prior to approval, then that cuts an easily thirty days off of that whole period.
I'd like for us to, you know, think of a way where we can be more efficient in our review process where we don't need five weeks to see if we can support costs in that way.
Then here's, this is a snapshot comparing our elementary four GMP to the budget we got from POGA on our sixty percent set for elementary five. One thing I do want to point out is that this sixty percent budget has a two and a half million dollar allowance for an access road to the site. We did have an easement that we negotiated and got signed and recorded that we can have an access road to Sam Davis to the north along that western property line parallel. So the church that owns the next two lots and we've got, I think it's a thirty-foot easement across the western side of those two lots. So that's something that, you know, can be in or out, but right now with this number you're seeing, that is in.
Okay, don't, don't.
So I just want to point this out. And I, you know, as somebody that just can't understand these construction costs. What you're saying on this slide is that this JRE ES four that we started construction in June of twenty-three came in at four hundred and thirteen dollars a square foot. Yes. That same school that we're going to start in June twenty-five, hopefully, is now coming in at five hundred dollars a square foot.
Yes, that's what this tells us.
That's eighty-seven dollars a square foot more for the same school in two years. And what's the explanation? So we are still working on defining that as best we can. I'm going to let POGA speak to this because they're, you know, deep in the weeds on this. So I'll just let you take it, but.
So we've been through this exercise over the last week or so. There's a couple of driving factors. I apologize. Obviously, we've acknowledged that we found steel, steel's been a driving factor across the board, I think, across the board. I think we were told that there is a price increase expected in the twenty percent over in the next ninety-eight just on steel. So that one went up considerably.
So you're forecasting that price increase? You haven't seen it yet, but your forecast is?
We don't. We're trying, we're trying to protect you guys with numbers that we got here today, saying, look, this is what we built the school for. I'll also say that there were several opportunities ahead of us that we were, that we were set up with Corrigan. We had a workshop on our own and we had talked about totally together and we just didn't get there yet. We presented the sixty percent set and we went through this and we were going to set the room and work through this. Not only would be the options that you get as a free two on elementary four, but we were going to look for other opportunities as well. We've done some comparative analysis from the elementary four to elementary five, all the way down to the side with the linear footages for our utilities, with the square footages on our paving, all of those things. And we've looked at those costs and yes, there is some huge raises, even though there's less linear footage and utilities, even though there's, you know, less square footage and paving. We've done so much of those, there really is, it's just driven by inflation and then there's, there's a tariff factor in a lot of the things that we're dealing with.
Can I interrupt? And I want to, I want to preface what I'm about to say. First of all, I'm very appreciative of POGA's partnership with our district in the sites that you're building now and the sites that you have built. And I think it's important for our community to know that POGA has built Sal and they build JRE, right? And they're building the stadium. And you built those on time. And as best I can tell, they're, they have been well-functioning facilities. I don't have Jeff coming back here saying there's been lots of defects or problems. So I just want to say thank you for that because we've had probably sites where we've had those problems and we're hearing about some of them with different contractors. So that's the positive side. Now, when you say, when you say that you're building these prices in to protect the district, it's really fair to say you're building in the higher steel prices to really protect POGA in case those tariffs happen. Because when you set the GMP, that's the price. If it goes over, that's on you and becomes under. So building in the tariff inflation doesn't necessarily protect the district, it protects the contractor.
But I also feel like my job to give you the most accurate information that I can and I want to set you up for success in regards to what I'm going to do. And as we give you the numbers, I want you to trust them and understand where they come from. That's really what we were trying to do is if you take the numbers that we did and project them out to when these contracts are going to be bought, this is what we think we're going to be.
And my skepticism is, and I understand that, my skepticism is, is it, I've been here three or four years. It was okay with material shortages and it was all these other issues that were causing these price escalations. And now, you know, inflation is somehow still being experienced in school construction yet, but it's not really being experienced in other areas of construction. So I think, and my, but my real skepticism is if I build in the tariff into this price, setting the GMP, and it never materializes, I'm not going to see it. Somehow that's going to get absorbed in the project. That's what my concern is, is for the district.
Well, I think two things. We've not. Well, I, I think two things. We've not bid this yet, so when we send this to the street, you guys are gonna see every bid that we, that we, that we take at that day. And then we're gonna understand our number at that, at that time. I feel like if I came in here and I told you, you know, Mr. Wester, I'm gonna build that thing for forty-eight million dollars today and we got bid on bid day and I was wrong, that's much worse than telling you that I can do it for this and then on bid day I was coming in here for forty-eight million dollars. I think there's, there's several opportunities for us to come in here and, and impact this number in a positive way. With A, on bid day, we're gonna get multiple trade partners. The budgets you guys are looking at, we reached out to one or two people in each trade and asked them to give us budget numbers. It's not a competitive setting. So when they're giving us their numbers, they're basing it off of, I built this school a couple of years ago. Here's my cost. I escalated. Here it is. This is what a lot of these numbers are, are, are driven from. In a competitive setting, we're gonna work for you guys and if we get, we're, we're gonna look for six to this. And I think that keeps our market honest and it doesn't allow us to, to just rely on somebody that's put an escalation factor in.
Two more questions. Who in this process, from the architect to the contractor, who is, who in this process is motivated and incentivized to keep our costs down?
I think both of us are, but I'll tell you right now.
Like incentivized, like do you make more money if you save us money? Or do you make more money if we spend more money?
We are, we are a lump sum, so it will not affect our fee.
Okay.
But we're always looking for opportunities to make the budget better with the contractor.
Is there a way to structure these deals where the, the consultants that we're working with are actually incentivized to save us money?
I don't know if the consultants can be incentivized. That, that would be on their half that I, that I wouldn't be able to speak to. But I'll tell you the, 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 the thing that incentivizes us to continue to control these budgets is because we keep getting invited back to the show.
Sure.
And there, there's, you know, the bond that, that's available here, the work that we're chasing is, is, is a, if you're not incentivized by that, then you probably aren't gonna be incentivized by us.
And I just wanna remind you, and that's why I do value, and, and one of the reasons I do value what Pogue has done for this district is for, I don't wanna fall in the trap that we just started this meeting with, is I want somebody that's gonna be accountable to this district for the facilities that we're building. And having that partnership is, is gonna, I think, be potentially, potentially be beneficial for the district to say, hey, if this ain't working in South, if this ain't working in JRE, if this ain't working at the four oh seven site, we know who it is. And then, last thing, fifty-eight million dollars, does that include that fifty-eight million dollars and that five hundred dollars a square foot? Are you not counting in that number the site prep cost, earthwork, concrete, the landscaping that was actually absorbed in middle school?
That, that number is, 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 it's in those numbers. So the, the, the budget that we gave you guys included, well, we could go to the school for what, what we assessed us now.
But a lot of the site prep, a lot of the concrete, a lot of the landscaping, because it's a combo site, was absorbed by the middle school construction cost, right? So what I'm trying to say is, is that fifty-eight million, if we had to pay for the site prep, if we had to pay for the concrete, if we had to pay for the landscaping that's currently being paid for by MS two, it would actually be more. It'd be over six to four.
So we're over, we're twenty percent increase.
We did a comparison.
Even though, even though you've saved two and a half million on those consist, uh, site preps, right? So, so there's another two and a half million, it would be, we'd be sixty million.
So for the architects in the room, so we've been told that it's number of man-hours is, is what you build on. It's a prototype school. It's been built. So where's the extra hundred and thirty thousand coming from?
I am not sure on that B number. Is that?
Yeah.
That's your number.
That's our number.
Yeah, so.
I'd have to verify the number because it, it is an additional. We were, had the same fee as what we had at JRE.
That's what we had.
No, it's higher.
It looks higher.
Higher by a hundred and thirty thousand.
I'll verify.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty grand higher.
I just wanna point out that the construction cost is fifty-two million. The fifty-eight is the total project. So that includes all the architect, F, F, and E, all the other pieces. I just wanted to clarify that. That the construction piece is fifty-two. It is still much more expensive, but it's just the fifty-two.
Well, and he did his math on square footage, right? Square foot cost, so it's twenty up at the top.
Up at the top is based on the fifty-two million, not the fifty-eight. Yeah, so square footage doesn't change. That cost is correct.
I have two questions. Um, Liz, he asked about incentives. We've talked about this before, I believe. And I think we're not actually allowed to incentivize them. We talked about it one time, incentivizing a contractor to say, hey, if you come in a million dollars under, we'll split it with you. Kind of thing, right? We save half a million. We give them a true incentive to come in half. I, I think we talked about this and it's not necessarily legal.
We did, we have talked about it in the past and I think that this would require a discussion of our legal counsel to say, is there a way to structure it in some form or fashion to incentivize? I don't think we can say, hey, we split it with you or lose much, but we'd have to ask what gives legal or that.
Well, on municipal contracts, you guys do municipal contracts too, right? Don't they usually have an incentive to finish early or to finish under budget or both?
There can't be, yes.
And is it typically a percentage of the savings? Is it? So it's worth, it's worth a discussion because I agree. Um, the other thing I would ask is, these, you say here at the top that the comparison, um, on the next, on the next page, it says that ES four to ES five sixty percent docs. So I know that, um, you showed that we had, I think we value engineered about four million out of JRE. Is that right?
Uh, I don't remember the number offhand.
Some number, right? We value engineered some of that. When we, to, to Mr. Slaton's point, Sam Slaton, that we put out, um, it's the same school, right? When we put that out to bid in the sixty percent docs, did we use the initial set of requirements? Or did we use the V, the VE set requirements when we put it out?
Yeah, we, we used the VE set. So what we did is when we started the, the, the elementary number five process, we took every RFI, every submittal, every PCR that we did and incorporated that into the set. Uh, we did go back through the VE set again just to verify after, uh, we've been discussing with Jeff after the sixty percent. Uh, there are a handful of items that were project-specific to that site and there was a handful of items that are subcontractor-driven, but, uh, the vast majority are included in that sixty percent set.
So, so like to like, to Mr. Western's point, two years later, finished carpentry's up sixty-one percent?
That, that's possible.
But that's not.
It's impossible.
Yeah, we, we didn't change the, we, we.
So none of the specs got changed from VE?
Oh, we, yeah, we included the VE.
Oh, so I know, so E?
From VE.
ES four VE to what got sent out to vendors to bid. Nothing changed?
Mr. Ross, what can I speak to that? One, just for one second. As some we used on the last school was a challenge for us. That is not improvised as our budget.
Okay, well, you're talking, I, I just picked one line item. So I, I'm gonna pick another one. How about plumbing? Plumbing's up seventy percent. There's, I'll pee in the bucket.
I do.
Wow.
That, that is.
I will. I mean, that's ridiculous.
I agree with you. That, that is one that, that we reached out to multiple, more trade partners to give them more numbers on. For instance, uh, that, that we use new plumbing on this site. New plumbing has been awarded a couple of high schools that probably won't be an option for this one. They did not provide us a number on, at this exercise. So we reached out to somebody else who probably wasn't dealing with the historical data that, that some of our other trade were. But I do think that's one of the opportunities for us on bid day to, to better.
I, I would hope.
Yes, sir.
Severely hope that that's one of the numbers that gets changed dramatically. I can understand HVAC expenses, supplies, things going up, but it's a slum shot.
A few things on the XPOC, yes, is we, at, at JRE, we, we used a VE in an alternate for carrier because I know that's not the district's preference. However, we, we had them bid the AON units, knowing that at bid time, if the carrier units are, are a benefit to the project, that would definitely be the option that was used.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where, I know a lot of the schools we did, we used AON for a long time. I don't think, the only place I would say we have a preference for AON is over the gym. Anywhere we have to be humidity controlled would be the only place. The rest of it, give me a good quality unit that's thirty percent less all day long.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I just wanna, just reiterate. So you guys used the VE specs. Nothing got changed from there to what got bid?
Correct.
Okay. A lot of work to do.
We do. I think one of the challenges, I just wanna leave you with this comment. You know, public education is kinda in somewhat of a crossroads. You know, and it's under attack. The funding is all, you know, people like to, there's a war on public ed. And one of the things I commonly hear from the people that attack public ed is that it's the consultants, it's the contractors making hand over fist, that they're just, it's really swampy. They're all floating around, making a ton of money off public ed and that's why we're struggling down in Austin to get more funding. And I want y'all to be aware of that. And it's our role here as best we can. And one of the struggles I wanna argue is there's, you know, I appreciate you showing up in these meetings and taking these hard questions, but we have to ask them. And it's not in a disrespect for you in no part, but we have to ask these questions because this institution is under attack. And this is a lot of money. These are huge escalators that I don't think we're seeing in the real world. And I don't know what the solution is. And I tell people right now, that's what I tell people, is if Argal becomes difficult to work with, you just go to some other school district. Because some other school district may just pay you because everybody's building schools in North Texas. And so, um, that's what I want people to understand what our challenge is in terms of balancing this. You know, Pogue, I'll say it again, architects, y'all, the last few projects have gone well and I appreciate that. And, you know, if it was my personal life, if I had a good contractor come into my house and do a good project, I'm probably not going out there trying to find the next cheapest guy. Unless I had a good. But when you go up seventy percent, you make me go, what are we doing here? And I just need to know. You hear you saying, hey, I'm, I'm doing what I can.
Our, our work isn't done.
Okay.
We're gonna continue to work. And I think you guys will, will, will see that come bid day because this exercise was put together and there's, there's tons of opportunities right there that we are aware of amongst our two teams on, on dollars that can be set.
And to your point, like, I, I've worked in Argal since I started working for Corrigan. And I treat every project like it's like my baby. So I try to like, we work very well. I'm glad that Jeff worked with us together too. Because even when we are in construction, we're always looking, like maybe the soft center of our fight, it says, why are we doing it this way? This way is gonna be cheaper. And we look at it and we say, yeah, let's get a credit for it. We're constantly looking on ways of making more efficient and saving money.
It would help me to know that you're doing that.
Okay, we can talk to Jeff.
In areas where you're doing that, to build my confidence that, I mean, I don't see what's going on behind the scenes. You just bring to me the number. You don't bring to me where you started and how you went on the down.
But, but, but to your point, like earlier, the GMP set, it's that.
And, and this, and, and yes, and to, to be fair, when we are doing construction, that's just in a, in a PCI, in a form of changing order. The same way sometimes some, something arises, a price increase because we didn't see something or center five respond. At the same time, sometimes it's the opposite. There is something that there's a way of saving money. And with Pogue and Jeff, like they, we're always talking about, especially with Jeff, like I'm, we're available twenty-four seven for Jeff and if Jeff is like, I have a question, how do you bring it this way? And we, we talk about it, we try to solve it, we try to save money for the district.
Bring me some good news when you can't share it. Just because it helps me build confidence that you guys are actually doing, not, not that I, I mean, it just, I just see the whole, the one number. I'll see where it starts.
Yeah, we're having.
I'll also say, Sam, you mentioned once that GMP set, yes, it is, but it's set. But it's also our goal to give you guys as much return on the savings that we possibly can. There's been some, some factors in some of these projects that's kind of close, but I think we have returned some money in the last couple of projects. And our goal would be that on this middle school, there's, there's, there's some dollars in it. That's our whole, that's our hope, everything.
Appreciate that. Yeah. Bob, come on. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, five oh five, PM, Greg.